All right, it is six o'clock. We will call the Sartell City Council meeting to order for Monday, April tenth. Please rise for pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel in front of us this evening, we have the agenda review and adoption. I would take a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries. Uh, we have one signed up for open forum public comment. Uh, is it Kellen Sharif? Not seeing them present, uh, we will move forward in their absence. Next up is special presentations. We have everything Sartell recommendation for funding.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm gonna present the Everything Sartell portion on behalf of Kayla Schoenberg. Um, she was unable to make it tonight, but she's the president of our Everything Sartell. So she just wanted me to make a couple of brief statements regarding Everything Sartell. And then I'll turn over to Mark Dingman, uh, president of the Sartell Baseball Association. You have in your packets the agenda and minutes from the most recent Everything Sartell meeting in which Everything Sartell, who also happens to be the commission that oversees our CVB dollars, our Convention Visitor Bureau Hotel Tax Dollars. Um, they collect and manage those dollars and make recommendations to the city council uh, on behalf of the collection of those dollars, um, and make recommendations of where they would like to see them expended. So to date, uh, we've not had any major expenditures of those dollars, but they've also not had any, um, major requests come into Everything Sartell. Um, so this, this was, I think, the second one that they've seen over the course of the time that I've been here. Um, by the end of year end, they'll have closer to about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, um, from several years of collection. Um, they heard a request from Sartell Baseball Association for the installation of lights on two of the fields at Pinecone Central Park. Um, I'll let Mark explain a little bit more of the tourism value that this brings. But, um, if you recall, the CVB dollars are supposed to be used intentionally on items that would draw tourism and draw visitors to Sartell. Um, and so, uh, the baseball association in their presentation helped to share with Everything Sartell the draw that, uh, both regionally, statewide, and honestly even outside of the state of Minnesota, that Pinecone Central Park is starting to, um, draw interest into Sartell. We also heard, um, at the Everything Sartell meeting, Michelle DeVries is the hotel manager for American Inn. Um, and she spoke very highly of, uh, how both hockey and baseball are the two biggest drivers of her hotel. Um, whether it's summer or winter, they're full every weekend. Um, and sometimes now going as far back as Wednesdays and Thursdays, depending on the length of the tournament. With, uh, recreational sports in Sartell primarily that youth, uh, younger youth age up to the high school, um, level. So I think between Shields Arena and, um, Pinecone Central Park, St. Cloud Orthopedics Field, um, I think we know the draw that that is for us here as a tourism aspect. So I will turn that, the rest of this over to Mark, and he can detail out their specific requests. Um, and then I'll come back up and share what Everything Sartell's recommendation was.
Thank you, Anna. Uh, like Anna said, um, we've been working for about a year and a half on, um, potential lighting project at Pinecone Central Park Baseball Fields. Um, we have it split into two phases. Phase one is what we're really after at this point in time. Phase one is the two larger fields, which is BCI and Gillland Fields. Phase two would be the other four smaller fields. Our focus right now is on the two larger fields. Uh, those fields primarily serve ages twelve, thirteen, which is older kids. You know, we, we anticipate, uh, a want or a, a value in that more than the younger, um, younger kids and smaller fields at this point in time. So, um, between some private donors, uh, okay, I'll list them off here. I mean, Sartell Baseball Association, we have currently, our board has approved a hundred thousand dollars towards this lighting project. Overall cost of this lighting project is roughly for phase one, about four hundred thousand dollars. St. Cloud Subaru, uh, has committed seventy-five thousand, uh, State Farm Insurance, seventy-five hundred. Mr. Twisty's also, which is right in the, right on the campus there, is fifteen thousand over five years as well. So we have a good start, but we kinda need to get across the finish line here. So, uh, we approached Anna and, uh, uh, Everything Sartell with a, with an ask for, for some funds to pursue this project. So, um, but specifically, I think you guys have the, the tournament numbers in front of you, in, in the packet. But I put this packet together just to visualize what we have done. I think this lays out the last six years, but this does go probably another five years beyond that as well. Um, in the last six years, just our tournament, te- number of tournament teams has drastically grown. Um, back in two thousand eighteen, we were somewhere in the range of a hundred and sixteen total tournament teams. So if, if you have these numbers in front of you, the bottom chart is what you should focus on. Um, and we try to be very conservative with these numbers too, but, um, and we, and we do translate these numbers with tourism in Sartell. I mean, youth sports is really what, what brings a lot of tourism through Sartell. We know that helps out, you know, restaurants, hotels, everything we have here. Um, so back in two thousand eighteen, total number of teams, hundred and sixteen. We just averaged three family members per player. Total tourists, thir- three thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight. Bring it up to today. Uh, this year, um, this was put together on March fourteenth. We had three hundred and six teams signed up for tournaments for this summer already. Um, that's, that's higher than that number, um, today. Uh, tournament teams are slowly tri- still trickling in. So we, we figure we're gonna have well over ten thousand tourists through Sartell just this summer alone and, um, really no question about it. So, um, so our ask in, in the purpose of these lights is to, uh, maybe add games on Friday and Saturday nights. At our tournaments, right now, we're forced to use some of the school facilities, which isn't ideal for the city of Sartell, um, and the teams that are coming through Sartell, uh, to play in these tournaments as well. We, we do have the nicest facility in the state of Minnesota, in my opinion. And, um, I have two kids in baseball, we travel over the state. I haven't seen one that's as nice or better than the one we have here. So we're just trying to increase the value of, uh, of the facility and, uh, for the members of this, of this community. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
So counsel in front of you, you have a request, um, recommended request from Everything Sartell. They did approve at the last meeting, um, a, uh, they approved the funding of the lights up to seventy-five thousand dollars or, or of seventy-five thousand dollars from the hotel tax dollars that Everything Sartell oversees. Um, and then they also, as a part of that, requested, um, a city match from the city's park fund of twenty-five thousand dollars. So, um, the two of them paired together of a hundred thousand dollars towards the lights, seventy-five thousand dollars from the Everything Sartell CVB fund, twenty-five thousand dollars from the park fund. Um, from a capital improvement and budgetary perspective, we were aware of this request. We've been, or of this need and fundraising that's been happening. As you know, with standard of most of our projects, whenever they meet with us, we tell them, come back when you know your gap. Like do the fundraising first and come back to the city with an identified gap. And so, um, we've known for a little over a year or so that they've been out fundraising. So we did have the funds set aside in our park fund, knowing that at some point they would come back um, and ask for a more holistic request once they knew what their gap was. So, um, they did over a year of fundraising and, and the sponsors that Mark mentioned, and then, uh, came to Everything Sartell from there. So I think I'll leave it at that, um, but just know that it's the, the two requests of the seventy-five thousand, the twenty-five thousand that would bring a hundred thousand dollars to the Sartell Baseball Association for lighting two fields at Pinecone Central Park.
Counsel, what questions do we have? Tim?
I guess my initial concern would be, um, with the lighting in the park. Um, I, I know that the neighborhood is far away, but is there any concern about oversplash of lights into the neighborhood or Providence? Have they been contacted and, and are aware of it?
No, and I, and at this point, um, they've been working with Lee Gruen, who's on their, uh, SBA committee, but also, uh, works for Bradbury Sam. Um, and so he's been looking at electrical lighting contractors to determine even what lights to put up. But I do, we did briefly discuss about, discuss that at the Everything Sartell of, you know, let's make sure that there's timers set to it and it's the, that we're not violating our own noise ordinance of noise pollution. Um, but I think they're at least aware of it and know that as we start looking at the lights, that they would need to make sure that they set it on a timer and, and meet our ordinance.
Um, what's the strategy for long-term maintenance of those lights?
I probably don't have the specifics being there right at this point in time. Lee, Lee has more of the specifics on the lights, lights themselves, but, uh, Lee has been working with, uh, really redundant design electric, design electric, has worked with, uh, well, with PCP in the past two,
Yep.
five, six different occasions, you know, and bringing, uh, uh, this idea forward over and over and over. So I, uh, our intent would be to finalize kind of a plan of as far as what, uh, what the lights are, um, present that to, to the city for approval before we're gonna proceed with anything.
Okay.
So this is kind of on the condition that everything's approved by the city, that goes for, for Tim's question, um, and your question as well.
Yeah, Mike, on that topic, my, um, just item for consideration is a year from now, lights burn out. Is that a city maintenance that we've gotta go and fix the lights? Is that on SBA? Um, and the confusion that I have there is simply, we've got a convoluted agreement there of multiple parties and who's doing what. And so I just wanna have crystal clear of, um, there's a financial capital ask upfront and then understand, is there a maintenance agreement long-term to that?
Yeah, absolutely. It, it actually could be really good timing. In addition, um, our lease agreement was a three-year, this is the second year of it, of, of SBA's lease of the fields. And so end of two thousand twenty-four will be the end of that lease. Um, construction of these lights, sounds like wintertime is the best time for them to construct it. So that lease agreement over Pinecone Central Park will be coming up for renewal anyway. So I think perhaps, you know, utility fee or utility, you know, determining usage of the lights and maintenance could be rolled into that next, um, agreement that would start in two thousand twenty-five, summer of two thousand twenty-five, if that makes sense.
Okay. Uh, the lighting sponsor structure, is that a new structure or repurposing the backside of one?
That's repurposing the backside of that main sign that's right at the entrance there.
Okay. I wasn't, yeah, I, I thought it looked familiar, I wasn't sure if it was a duplicate or not. Uh, counsel, any other general comments or questions? The ask is seventy-five thousand from our hotel tax, visitor tax, uh, pool and twenty-five thousand from parks. Is there any reason we aren't going a full hundred thousand or the full ask out of the Everything Sartell?
No, this is just the recommendation from Everything Sartell of at least seventy-five thousand. Uh, i- in the end, the council is who has full jurisdiction over those CVB dollars. So, um, that's definitely something that you guys could decide and choose to do. Um, there is, we are projecting that by the end of this year, being roughly around a hundred and sixty thousand. So I feel like there's a healthy balance in there for sure.
I feel like if this is something council wants to move forward with, um, and I don't wanna get in front of that, but if it is, CVB dollars are more restrictive than our park dollars. Um, and so I just feel like it would free up, I mean, it's twenty-five thousand dollars, but it frees up more flexible cash for us than CVB dollars.
Yeah, and Ryan, to that point, you, you make an excellent point that, um, I think that's part of why we haven't seen an expenditure out of that a hundred and sixty thousand since its existence, just because it is quite restrictive. It needs to be tied directly to tourism. You need to be able to provide direct correlation numbers like this, a study and analysis like this of people that are actually coming in, into Sartell. Um, and so it is, it is more difficult to find a project that fits underneath the qualifications of the CV, CVB dollars and, and having the hotel, the one hotel that we have in town be behind it. Um, and so I do, uh, you make an excellent point that it might make sense to go that route versus using our park funds, which we do use for every single park in Sartell neighborhood, regional, you name it.
Counsel, any thoughts on, or consideration there?
Yeah, I would tend to agree that wouldn't be a bad idea to take, um, everything out of the Everything Sartell. Just kinda like you already hit on with the, uh, park having a little more flexibility on what we can use expenditures on. And this obviously had a great layout of the tourism that it does bring to the city. So, um, I think it's, uh, it'd be well-used.
Um, go ahead, Jim.
I was just gonna say that I, I completely agree with that, that we would wanna use the Everything Sartell dollars.
One of the things that we've emphasized, um, in, in past contributions like this is, is being that last donor. And I know, um, Anna, you hit on that for us. I guess, um, I'll make a recommend, or I'll make a motion to, um, pay up to a max of a hundred thousand dollars, um, with a hundred percent of that being out of the Everything Sartell fund. Um, but if there's a way that we tie that to the backend, understand in here, you're going to get financing, um, for some of the gaps. Um, and so that we, I guess it sets up a situation where we pay that when you're ready to close on that loan or, uh, it's close there too, right? So that if there's a snag between here and closing on that loan, we don't fork over a hundred thousand dollars to have it sit. So, um, I guess, Anna, maybe you can help me summarize that, um, in the minutes. But, uh, I'd like our motion to reflect that, uh, we truly are that last conduit as part of that. Um, and that, you know, I know there's possibly some challenges there with power or other things that, that this is the ask holistically and, and that we don't bleed into twenty-five thousand dollars of Public Works in-kind or others that, um, recognizing the significance of the match or the ask. Is that, first I'll ask before a second, does that make sense to counsel? All right, is there a second on that?
I'll second.
All right, for, uh, discussion on that, again, hundred, recapping a hundred thousand dollars, uh, direct from the Everything Sartell Fund, uh, we're the last element of, of, uh, financing there or donation there, uh, prior to closing. And that, uh, this is inclusive of our in-kind as well. Captures it?
Yep, I can document that in minutes.
Any discussion on that, counsel, before we ask for a vote? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Thank you. All right, next on our agenda is approval of city council minutes. We've got, uh, March thirteenth regular council and March thirteenth special city council. I'd take those as one if there's a motion.
I'll move that.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. On to consent agenda, we have items A through M. Uh, I will pull item K and item L. Are there any others? Seeing none, uh, I'll make a motion for consent agenda items A through M with the exception of K and L. Motion, there's a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those carry. Um, just a couple of quick questions. Item K is the Heritage Drive Trail Construction Service Agreement. Um, at our last council meeting, we had pretty significant conversation about the push-button crossing at Seventh Avenue South. Um, can you just help us understand how that, um, is, I guess, moving forward?
Yeah, so currently the plans that council approved at the last meeting are at the state and federal level for review. And we did move that push-button crossing as an alternate.
Yeah.
Um, so that it will be bid as an alternate. We did take a closer look at the cost estimates for kinda that push-button with the overhanging, um, crosswalk versus the more traditional we've seen recently in the city, um, without the overhang one. And the cost comparison is similar. In fact, the overhang one was a little bit cheaper just because you don't have to have as far advanced warnings with the other types of signs. Um, so it, council's direction at the last meeting was to move it as an alternate. One item of note, because, um, we do have funding for this project, um, and that push-button crossing system was part of that funding application. If bids come back and council decides not to move forward with the crossing at that location, um, there likely would be a reduction in funding received from that grant.
Okay. And is that something that, I know we've talked about it at finance a little bit committee, is that something we can have maybe brought for clarity before we go for those fundings? I think we had a really good conversation, uh, about that crossing. Um, but again, we're sitting here saying, hey, if we don't do it, they take funding versus if we could have a little bit more dialogue prior to the requesting with specifics like that, I think would be healthy.
Yeah, I think, um, going forward with the, the, both the finance policy that you guys committed at, or approved at the finance committee and then council, um, on consent tonight, actually. And then in addition, um, integrating a little bit more involvement on that capital planning side. So historically, we've approved, you know, these are the gaps we wanna address for trail gaps, and these are the pedestrian systems that we wanna address and then apply for grants from there. I think with these new policies, we'll be able to dive into those a little bit deeper as well as capital improvement planning of, yep, they might be on a map, but does that mean that
Perfect.
it's a funding priority? You know, they're, they're two different things. And so I think, um, going forward, we'll have a lot lengthier discussion about those.
Perfect, thank you. Um, counsel, I'll move item K for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second on, on, uh, item six K. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Um, six L. Uh, two questions. First one, um, there's quite a few numbers in there on the easements, uh, and, and what's being paid out. First question is, are all the easements covered by our federal tax dollars?
Um, so the easements are reimbursable, and I would have to check if that's the federal or the state funds. I think it's the state, but, correct. Um, so those easements are covered under one of those funding categories.
Okay, so that doesn't, it doesn't create an overage on the project, on the city's financial burden?
Correct.
Because, okay, perfect. Um, and are there, second question would be, are there any other easements that are not settled on that project yet?
Uh, no, these were the last two easements for the project.
Perfect. Uh, counsel, that's all I had on L. Were there any others? Seeing none, I'll move L for approval. Is there a second? Motion and a second to approve six L. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. On to new business, which is approval of odor control pilot study plan agreement.
And mayors and members of the council, um, for your consideration this evening is, um, an agreement to start a pilot study for odor control at lift station one. Um, odor at lift station one is something that Public Works has been battling for over ten years. Um, so this would, we did some testing on the sewage and the air this past year um, to try and identify what might be causing the different odor. From that assessment, the recommendation was to pilot a biological option, um, which would provide benefit not only for the odor, um, but also in reducing hydrogen sulfide and also lower BOD levels, which, um, again, may not fully understand how those impact the, the sewage. But the city currently, um, uses different measures to control BOD and the hydrogen sulfide levels. So they would be able to eliminate the use of that and just go with the biological option if it works. So it would provide that third benefit of the odor reduction is what we're hoping. But we wanna be able to try it out, um, 'cause each sewer mix in different cities, um, is different, a little bit different. So it's an opportunity to try out this option, um, to see if it works before fully committing to it. Um, I can let John maybe give a little background on the different items that the city has tried over the years to, um, fix the odor issue, um, 'cause he has extensive knowledge.
I don't know if we need to go into it. Do you have any questions, I guess? If you have any questions, instead of giving the whole history, unless you want the history from we've dealt with.
Um, and, and counsel, there's two items we, we talk about, uh, lift station one about every other council meeting. And there's two items. One is the flow, is that right?
Correct.
And the other one is the, uh, apparent smell in the area. So I, over the last six years, have gotten those confused every other council meeting when we talk about it. Um, but two separate issues.
So just maybe to go into it a little bit, I mean, ever since we've moved that lift station up to where we have it, it used to be farther down by Heim's Mill for, for many, many years. And we reconstructed it, we moved it up closer to one-twenty there. That's when we started having the odor complaints. And we, we've tried many things. Um, we've, I mean, I've been down to different cities. We've looked at products, we've, we've tried to cover them, we've made our own. I mean, over the last years, we've gone a lot of different directions. Um, right now, we have two carbon filters running down there that were sucking everything through carbon filters. Um, it, it, it's working. It, it's not great, but it, it's doing a much better job than anything we've had. Um, we're also feeding a chemical called bioxide. That's for the hydrogen sulfide going down the line. Um, and the line is getting eaten away, the top of the pipe, the steel pipe was getting eaten away by the hydrogen sulfide. So, um, before we started feeding bioxide, our hydrogen sulfide levels were like three hundred parts per million where we dumped into the St. Cloud line, and we're, we're down to about twelve parts per million. But we feed seventy-five gallons a day of that product. And that product runs, I think we're at three dollars and seventy-five cents a gallon right now. So it's not, it's not a cheap fix. Uh, and none of this is a cheap fix by any means. Um, we, we come across this biolog- biological operation and, and maybe we're concentrating on lift station one, but as we've now, I mean, we have some odor complaints at other lift stations, um, twelve over here, 'cause we got a lot of walking trails by our lift stations, so we, we get complaints over here. Um, I'm anticipating some down by three, which is off Seventh Street, where we just put the new trail. So I'm anticipating we'll get some there. So this biological process is one that we set up these biological feed sites upstream and we clean the whole system, hoping, you know, to clean up the, the odor issues we have within our lines. Um, what we have is a biofilm in there. They're, they're, they're feeling that this, um, biological bugs will eat the film and clean the lines and, and be wonderful, I hope. And I've hoped for a lot of different things on this over my years here, so, um. But we also looked at another pilot of doing hydrogen peroxide, which is another method. Very dangerous. It's a fifty-fifty mix of hydrogen sar- or peroxide, so it's a dangerous product. Um, we need to put in, uh, shower stations or wash, eye washes at these sites, portable. So the, the biological seemed like the safe, best bet to go. Um, we've worked with these people pretty extensively in the last couple of months here, um, trying to get the price down to a, to a pilot, you know, use as a pilot study. And we, we've worked very hard with them and they're, they're anxious to get here. They, they don't have a site in Minnesota, so they're very anxious to get here. So they've been really good people to work with to this point. Any other questions?
What do other cities do? I can't imagine our waste is much different.
Um, you know, St. Cloud feeds a lot of bioxide at different sites. Um, they've made their own filters out of, you know, wood chips and biological, um,
Shoot it up in the air.
Yeah, so there's a, so about eighteen years, fifteen to eighteen years ago, I was up in Moorhead. They make this big tube and they shoot it, the big blower, and they just suck it out and they shoot it up as high as it goes. But we went up and looked at that one and you walked about three hundred yards away and it comes down, so.
Shocking.
Well, we used to have a paper mill site.
Yeah, yeah.
Back there.
Yeah. So, uh, and actually, I think St. Cloud's gonna put in one of them shooters this, this winter, or this summer here. They, they've got one budgeted try. They have a lot of issues St. Cloud does around the country club down there 'cause their big main lift station is there, and they've had that trouble for years also.
It just seems like it's an ongoing study or, or solution or study or solution. And it's just, it's just, yeah, like you said, in the last five, six years I've been involved here, it doesn't seem like there's been anything that's really stuck, so. I guess more power to you, but, uh, somebody makes money on study after study and telling us that smells the same. It's starting to get suspicious.
And and that's my challenge with this, I mean, it's it's fifty thousand here, a hundred thousand there, we keep studying, right? And I just would look for like, what is someone else doing? How do we spend a hundred and fifty thousand now and have a solution versus just keep studying, but April?
Yeah, I I think the difference of this, I mean, we call it a study, but I think the difference is this, is it's a pilot study. So you're actually trying a product versus just taking, you know, we we took air and sewer samples, but it wasn't getting to a solution. This is actually test driving what could be the solution, we're just making sure we try it before we do a full implementation of it. So I I think we're moving in the right direction, and I think this is a little bit different than a model or some testing. It's actually trying the product out.
And but isn't that what we did, I thought, I thought maybe a year ago, we talked about and we started dumping items into it, which was going to solve the problem. And I mean, it sounds like it brought it from three hundred down to twelve, but.
Oh, no, we've been feeding that bioxide for about fifteen years. Because once St. Cloud's line collapsed, probably fifteen years ago, right by Coburn's and Centennial, and that's kind of the start of this hydrogen sulfide, nobody really even looked at it. And that was kind of the start as St. Cloud's fifty-four inch line collapsed. And that was our only feed, and I I remember the phone call vividly, hey, you have to shut your sewer off, our line collapsed, well, that's our only feed there, there's no shutting our sewer off. So that was kind of the big part, and then there was a, St. Cloud did a study on how high these hydrogen sulfide levels were. And we were the first ones that kind of were forced it with our sewer agreement to start feeding a a chemical to reduce them hydrogen sulfide levels. And then pretty soon, Wake Park uh and St. Joe, they come into a main lift station there. Um, and they ended up starting to feed there, and St. Cloud had a lot of little, little stations out and about, and they started all feeding there. So it kind of just turned into, you know, we got to get the hydrogen sulfide levels down. And everybody, you know, um, in sewage, you know, they all say it's the hydrogen sulfide, it's the rotten egg smell. And and I've been saying for years, yeah, we have that under control, we don't have a hydrogen sulfide issue anymore. But we still have a lot of odors, which are called mercaptans in wastewater, there's just many different combinations that create odor. And are we different than any others? I I don't know why we are, but it seems like we are.
Sure. Uh, maybe my memory doesn't serve me correctly, I thought there was something we we started dumping in maybe a year or two ago, but.
We put some, um, we put some blowers in some smaller stations, and that was mainly for fats, oils, and greases. And this also, so this is another, and April didn't mention this, but this is also a, these bugs. So we get very thick mats of grease in our lit- we have ten lift stations, and we get very thick mats of grease we got to go clean out at least once a year, and it's it's not a fun job. So we did put a few blowers in, and they keep agitating it, and they do okay, but it's just not the. So once we start building these bugs, this is also a feature that this chemical or this um system is supposed to clean up is your fats, oils, and greases that are in your system, which overall cleans your whole system, your lift stations, your pipes, hopefully preventing future backups too.
Awesome.
Is there any fun job with lift stations?
Hearing them run quietly, the red light's not on.
Okay.
Uh, it looks like fifteen thousand to be in the study, um, thirty thousand for services, and then eight thousand testing, is that a pretty accurate? Estimation?
Yeah.
I'd say it's a pretty good ballpark, we we have to negotiate and work with the two vendors and lab services yet, but I would say it's a pretty good estimate.
Okay, and what's the thirty thousand?
That's the setup of the equipment and for them to come in and get everything set up.
Mobilizing?
Mobilizing fee, correct? And actually, that's all they're charging us, the original fee when we started this was a hundred and forty thousand for this pilot study. So we've worked pretty hard to get them down, and they're pretty eager to get here, so. And we have some budgeted money for some different things in lift stations that um we we run every year, we run for lift station upgrades. And Rob feels we can use that fund to to pay for this.
Yeah, just to clarify, it will come out of the sewer fund, and we do budget annually for lift station maintenance. So I asked John to come down on lift station maintenance this year so that we can pay for the study without going above budget. So we're able to reallocate some dollars to make this work if this is something council's uh feels is 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 needed.
Are there future investments needed so this works? How much more is this going to cost us to keep it or expand it, or are there any future investments on this?
No, in a, in the in the world we're in right now for our bioxide and for our filters, we cost us twelve thousand dollars a month. So if this does work, we're going to probably be a wash across the board, we'll get rid of the filters, we'll get rid of the bioxide, and we're feeding, so it'll it'll be a wash i- in the best case scenario that we're looking at.
Any other discussion on sewer smell? Council, look for a motion on the odor control pilot study plan agreement.
I'll move that.
There's a motion to approve?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, item under, we're going on to old business, uh, item eight A is twenty twenty-three overlay plan approval and authorization to bid.
Yeah, members and mayor, members of the council, um, for your consideration tonight is the plan approval and authorized bids for the twenty twenty-three overlay plan. Just going to give you an overview of the planned overlay project. Um, Twelfth Street North between Pinecone Road and County Road One would be planned for a full depth reclamation. And then Fifteenth Street North and some patches in uh that neighborhood would be planned for a mill and overlay um shown in red, and the Twelfth Street full depth would be Twelfth Street North shown in purple. Um, the Twelfth Street North reclaim uh is a state aid road, so we are going to submit the plans, and they're currently there right now for state aid review. Um, a portion of those expenses are reimbursable through the state aid program. Um, so the project includes not only um grinding up the pavement and some of the gravel underneath and reshaping the roadway, uh, but also upgrading some of the pedestrian ramps. Uh, the city's pedestrian plan in order to get those up to ADA compliant is to make those improvements as projects are done um in the area. So we'll be making those improvements as well. Um, as I mentioned, the reclaim would be taking up uh the existing four inches of bituminous and the eight inches of class five. Uh, re-grading and re-compacting, the biggest change would be going from um like a two and a half, two point eight percent slope on the crown to a three percent slope on the crown. This will also help shed water from the roadway and uh hopefully lengthen the life of it after this project is complete. The Fifteenth Street North and Patches uh is the mill and overlay, this would be a two inch full width mill, so from curb line to curb line. We would do a half inch leveling course, which is a very fine sand mixture to fill in um any larger potholes, divots, um, kind of create a a smoother surface for then a inch and a half where course on top of that. We would also do pedestrian ramp improvements and then curb replacements um where necessary. We'll be also be making those curb replacements on Twelfth where necessary. Um, one item of note for crosswalks and pedestrian ramps uh at the intersection of Fifteenth Street North and Ninth Avenue. There currently is two crosswalks, um, on the east side of Ninth Avenue and then across Ninth Avenue. We'd be looking to extend the sidewalk about fifty feet and replacing those two crosswalks with one crosswalk to um get from sidewalk to sidewalk at this location. Um, along Fifteenth Street, the sidewalk is on the south side of the road, it transitions to the north side of the road. Um, so just reducing the number of times pedestrians have to cross a roadway uh in order to navigate uh along Fifteenth Street North. Um, just all the different intersections, we're going to be making improvements on Fifteenth Street North. Um, when it was originally constructed, the ADA uh regulations have changed, so just bringing up all those intersections to meet current ADA standards. Uh, estimated project costs, um, total cost for the project, um, nine hundred thousand, nine hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. Um, as I mentioned, Twelfth Street North is a state aid route. Um, current estimate of those state aid qualifying funds uh would be two hundred and ninety-five thousand. As the city has currently budgeted one million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand for seal coat projects, overlay projects, and street and storm repairs. Uh, so this would be part of that budgeted amount. Um, earlier tonight, on consent, you did approve the design for the seal coat portion of this project. Um, once we get bids in for the overlay that's presented tonight and the seal coats, um, we're anticipating some additional funding, and we'll identify either more seal coats or overlays at that time. Uh, project schedule, uh, if plan is approved tonight and authorized for bid, we would complete bidding in May. Award, May or June, depending on how long it takes the state to um review the plans. Uh, construction would be this summer with completion. Um, fall, I put on there, but I would anticipate August, September, early, early fall or or late summer. Um, with that, I'd answer any questions you have, I do have up on the screen just kind of the city overlay priorities um based on year coming up just with the plan we've reviewed with you and looked at in the past as well.
Council, do you have any questions for engineering?
Yeah, Fifteenth Street North, I know there's one intersection um where there's, it tends to flood. We need an inch or two of rain, is there any discussion on either type of curbing or anything else to try to hopefully make that out? It'd be just a little left on that picture there.
Um, along Fifteenth Street North? Um, I guess I'm not familiar maybe with the location.
So the house in the corner there, that that intersection right next to that, the crosswalk there tends to flood.
It'd be fifteenth and what is that, ninth? Like the next one down.
Those three roads.
Yeah. We can take a closer look at that, um, are you familiar?
No, I'm not familiar with it at all.
Yeah, I know what he's talking about, we we can talk about it at staff, because I I I know exactly the intersection.
No, if if there is a issue that we know that flooding, we can definitely incorporate into these plans. In fact, at this intersection, we are redoing a couple of the inlets and storm sewer, so now would be the time to do it, we can absolutely look at that and incorporate it.
Bita loves to put in rain gardens, seems like a natural fit.
It's too soon.
Council, any other questions on the project? Seeing none, I will look for a motion on the twenty twenty-three overlay improvements plan and authorizing for bid. We have a motion to approve? Is there a second? Motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That item carries. Uh, on to golf course uh and projects update.
Mayor, members of the council, um, perfect timing with the overlay projects being discussed tonight. Uh, we wanted to mention a a specific project update for the golf course, but then also just projects in general, overlays being one of them. Um, you likely saw a press release that came out in regards to our rollout of our projects and performance site, which is um functioning under a portal called ClearGov. Um, overlays are on there, so if residents want to check out what roads are next, as a, you know, you saw the chart up there of the different colors and priorities. Um, that's an example of something that we're now sharing out publicly on this ClearGov site. You can also take a look at future uh road reconstruct projects and when they're slated to take place and priorities. Um, a couple other uh projects, I'm just reading them off directly from the site here, uh, we do have an update on the Aldi project. Um, so we can do anything from commercial projects, commercial developments such as Aldi, Solutions Behavioral Health is another commercial one. Connor Road One Reconstruction Project, Nineteenth Avenue, uh, you guys would have seen the update today that went out to residents, and then we'll also be steering them to the ClearGov site, because you can subscribe directly to that site to get updates from there instead of um just email. Um, as I mentioned, the overlay street maintenance plan, West Side Reconstruct, Fifteenth Street North. Um, so those are just a sample of some of the projects that are listed on the site in addition to our financial performance. So just trying to provide another avenue for us to engage with our residents and also be more transparent about both our financial performance and then our project performance. In addition, uh, we wanted to provide a quick update, um, we've had some questions from residents and visitors alike, especially as we see seventy degrees in the weather, um, and people are going to be itching to get out and golf. Uh, we know that we've had several questions regarding the Pine Ridge Golf Course. Um, so I thought I would just provide a brief update, and this update is also on that ClearGov site, I did just see um WJON also put an article out on it. Um, so as you might recall, or the public might recall recall back in September twenty twenty-two, uh, we did have a proposed concept for the Pine Ridge Golf Course from a private party. Um, from that, the council directed staff to go through a full RFP process, letter of, letters of interest were collected first, and then it went to a full RFP process that was presented to council in early January, uh, so January twenty twenty-three. So um went through that letter of interest process, then went through a proposal process, uh, four parties presented to council. Um, from there, council had some questions regarding legality and just wanted to ensure that the course would have uh applicable deed restrictions around maintaining golf course operations, um, as well as some other legality questions related to the lease that currently takes place uh with the management party that's out there now. Um, and then in March, there was a closed meeting at the city council level to begin contract negotia- negotiations for a purchase agreement of the property, and council will be reviewing that purchase agreement at the next meeting, which is April twenty-fourth. Um, and that review and documents will have, that has to take place at a public meeting for approval. So that will be at the next council meeting, tentatively, and again, this is on our ClearGov site and listed as tentative. The plan would be that the lease with the current operators would end in, at the end of the twenty twenty-three golf season. Um, so anybody looking to purchase memberships would be able to golf through the rest of this year with that operator. And then, um, if approved by city council, the tentative closing of the property would be in twenty twenty-four. So just wanted to provide more of a detailed update to council and to residents, um, for anybody that might have questions. And if they have further questions, they can go onto our ClearGov site, and it's all spelled out on there as well. So open it up, any questions for you guys, but more so, n- no motion necessary, but just more so wanted to provide an update.
Uh, council, any questions on the update?
Uh, quick question, has anybody um got an update on County Road Four and one thirty-three, Five Points? Uh, roundabout and how that's going to affect construction there and Nineteenth as far as how do you get out of town to the southwest?
Yeah, so um Pinecone Road is going to be the detour for both projects. Um, the roundabout, the county, the last I heard was going to be mid-June before they were going to start there.
Yeah, cutting trees down now, so.
Yeah, but that's about all I know, unless April, you know anymore on that project, that was the last I'd heard.
No, um, Scott Lang's been leading the Nineteenth Avenue project, and I know he's been in contact with the county um several times to coordinate detours, um, traffic flow, um, but that's about all I know for dates as well, too.
So down to one twenty? I mean, the, I I'm trying to think how you would get to St. Joe, I mean, you gotta go to one twenty and then cut over on.
Well, you can take the uh, oh, yeah, I was I was going to say you can take the cut through, but to get to the cut through, you gotta go Pinecone down to one twenty over to four.
Yeah, and where does four go, if you're going north on four, you give them a, yeah, it's going to be interesting.
You have to get up, you have to get up a little earlier in the morning.
I'm just wondering if you, if you're going north on on County Road Four, you're going to have to go through St. Joe and then out past the holiday there straight up. Yeah, okay, I guess that's not our issue, but.
No, but it will have in, like Nineteenth Avenue, it will impact us with Pinecone Road a- again.
Let me tell you this, it won't be as bad as last year.
Amen.
And that is a county project, and so
Yes, county project.
And others that have concern about that specific project, uh, council or Commissioner Persky would be the one to go to.
Maybe the APO.
Or the APO. Uh, any other questions, comments on um golf course and project updates?
Yeah, I would ask. Yeah, I would ask um on the golf course, we talked about um a lease and a closing date that would be separate. Is that correct?
Yeah, as of right now, um mostly because there'll need to be a lag time between when that lease closes up for the city to be able to get in. And take care of anything that's remaining there before, but that could change. I haven't seen the actual documents yet, so that was the last conversation I had with Adam.
I guess I would just make a comment to say that I know we talked a lot about them doing simultaneously and I'm still in support of simultaneous. Just because we've seen how closings can sometimes get delayed or fall through. Last thing we'd wanna do is have that happen and not have anybody to run the golf course.
Yes, I get what you're saying now. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, um when do we think we'll see those documents?
Um I just talked with Adam today and he thought sometime this week. Um but I've urged him that you guys would like to be able to review it in, you know, plenty of advanced time prior to the twenty-fourth, so so he's aware.
Y- yeah, um WJON and I believe KNSI also ran an article on it today. And so I've heard from a number of people of what's happening. And it's a little bit of, I don't actually know, um so wait and find out. Obviously, the weather's playing into this as well, um understandably, but. I guess going off of your comment, Jed, is that um our councils had a number of conversations. And the last one we had was. To really stick to that of especially that sequencing the closing and then the cancellation. Knowing that if we cancel early and then closing doesn't happen, we are left with eighty-two acres and not an operator. And I thought I thought Adam was gonna take that message and be very direct and not negotiate from there, but maybe we'll have to wait and see what comes out. Comes out in that um perk agreement when we see it. Um the other ask I would have is as we approved our um financial policy. And the under the um general policies for municipal subsidies, I'll refresh us on item G and H. GH and I, I guess, speaks to the financial guarantees and all others associated with that. Um we've talked about a number of of uh updates to that course. And making sure that we've got some financial guarantees tied in there. And then the demon- item H speaks to the uh must be able to demonstrate to the city satisfaction, the ability to construct, operate, maintain. I think that maintain is a significant one that I continue to hear about. Um so. I guess until we see the perk agreement, there's probably not too much more that I can go into, but um definitely I know that. People in our community, especially the golf community is loud and uh boisterous about it right now and and asking some questions. I've heard as far as they're looking to host a listening session at the course, um and that we as council may be invited. But haven't heard anything uh concrete on that. I would hope that we're able to through ClearGov. Share updates that answers people's questions.
Yeah, and mayor members of the council, people can, just to uh reiterate when talking about ClearGov, people can go on to subscribe. And so when you subscribe, you can subscribe to that specific project. So they can go on and subscribe to the golf course so that if they can't, you know, tune in on the twenty-fourth or can't be here or, you know, don't stay on top of necessarily council packets being sent out. Um because those documents will be public documents in the council packets as well. They can subscribe to the update and get the update that way as well. So um hopefully people will take advantage of that opportunity, but I know it's kind of a new system for people to get used to.
Good question.
Good question. It does have the capability to have a comment section. We can turn it on or off.
Um I would also like to throw out, um obviously, we had a lot of conversations on this over the last few months, especially at the last meeting. We were in there for a long time. Um I know we're off uh from a council from a perspective on price of where we all think they should come in at and not come in at. And um I guess what I would ask is I will not be here on the council meeting on the twenty-fourth. Um I would appreciate if the council would be willing to move that debate and conversation to the May eighth meeting.
Being you'll be absent the twenty-fourth?
I'll be absent the twenty-fourth.
Uh is there any constraint on staff's perspective with that?
No, I don't see any issue. I think the eighth would be fine.
Council, are we? Gives us uh, so we should get information this week. Might actually give us more time to share details and everything before we cast a vote. So May eighth, if you're not able to make it, let me know as soon as possible, so we can make sure we have a full council. Uh any other question? There's no um motion or ask on this, more of a update for us. Seeing none, we'll move forward. Next up is item nine. We've got public hearings. The first one is Solutions Behavioral Health Healthcare Revenue Bonds.
Yes, good evening. Solutions Behavioral Healthcare is requesting to issue revenue bonds in the amount not to exceed three million dollars. To finance costs of the exhibition, construction and equipping of their office on Amber Avenue South. Bonds will be payable solely from Solutions Behavioral Health revenue and will not constitute any lien or encumbrance against the city. Uh the city will never be compelled to pay the bonds or the interest and the city will be able to collect a half cent issuer fee. When these are issued. This conduit debt is within the boundaries of our financial policies and within Minnesota state law. And it has also been reviewed by our municipal advisors. Uh staff recommends approval of the issuance. And tonight, we're looking for a motion in second to approve the resolution and loan agreement after the public hearing. And I believe there's a couple of representatives from Solutions Behavioral Healthcare with us tonight, so if you have any questions specific to them. They're in attendance and can help answer those questions.
Council, any questions before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on Solutions Behavioral Healthcare Revenue Bonds, please step forward. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and affiliation?
Yeah, I'm mayor and members of the council. My name is Joel Bach and I'm the executive director at Solutions Behavioral Healthcare. I um just wanted to explain a little bit of our our revenue bonds. We have done this previously in other cities that we have dealt with, Detroit Lakes, Sparkville, other places. And it's uh worked out rather nicely for us. It puts us at a uh the advantage for solutions. Or is to have a reduced rate in our mortgage over time and that is a big benefit. So we can use our our money as more for the mission of our organization. So thank you for entertaining that. Um Mr. Phil here, our attorney. I don't know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions specific to the legal documents? I'll save you a trip to the podium. Uh we'll give second call. Anyone wishing to testify? Third and final call, anyone wishing to testify on Solution Behavioral Healthcare Revenue Bonds? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Uh council, further discussion or questions? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to approve the resolution and loan agreement. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.